The fifteenth Sustainability Summit. Day begins with a special session, Action Agenda for Sustainable and Self-Reliant India. On behalf of the CII ITC Centre of Excellence for Sustainable Development and the Confederation of Indian Industry, I would like to extend a very warm welcome to all our dignitaries for this session and to all the delegates who have been a part of this summit from day one. To begin with session, may I request Mr. Chandjit Banerjee, Director General Confederation of Indian Industry, to give his opening remarks.
Thank you, Renika. Namaskar, sir. Honorable Minister for Environment, Forest, Climate Change, Minister for Information and Broadcasting, our Minister for Heavy Industries, Honorable Sri Prakash Javadekarji. Namaskar, sir. Mr. Sanjeev Puri, it's my pleasure to welcome you to this fifteenth Sustainability Summit. Today is the second day that we are having this summit and the subject is Action Agenda for Decade and it's a great honour for all of us to have in our midst today, our honorable Minister Sri Prakash Javadekarji for giving his thoughts and his guidance and his inputs to this August gathering. The world at present is trying to cope with COVID-19 crisis, all of us are trying to do that. Hence, as a civilization, we have two alternatives, sir, we have been talking about. Either we continue with business as usual or we transcend to a greener proposition and that's the overall backdrop, sir, of our session today. And the turmoil caused by the pandemic has led many practitioners and stakeholders reflect as it has set in motion new dynamics and many significant changes being seen in the world at this time. With all of that, it becomes important to understand how to chart the course towards the greener economy, a green economy path and that which should really appear now. And the session today is indeed very important as the present crisis has shown that growth must be inclusive and sustainable in the long term and both sustenance and sustainability have to be the base of the economic recovery as our nation responds to this crisis. Honorable Minister, ladies and gentlemen, as we are all aware that the global governance framework for climate change, environment and biodiversity has been advancing over the years and there are numerous interlinkages between the triple bottom line of environment, economy and society. So, business, all businesses therefore, there are primary engines of economic growth as we recognize and they have a key role to play and it is crucial that sustainability becomes the core of for business competitiveness in order to embrace a more green and a more inclusive recovery. So, going forward, the economy recovery path should consider investing in interventions that can reduce risk from pandemics in the future alongside aiming at creating higher growth and there should be emphasis on recovery measures that promote environmental sustainability, social justice and economic progression and this is an opportune time therefore to discuss policies which can leverage the economic packages to contribute towards environmental sustainability. And the COVID-19 pandemic has made us realize that it is really the time to go back to the nature, to not exploit it, but to find real sustainable solutions and for all of this, there is no other person who is better than Sri Prakash Javadekarji to be in our midst today and I must say how honoured we are to have our honorable Sri Javadekarji giving his perspectives here today. And he has given us in the past, many, many, in his different positions that he has held, he has given us various insights, be it in the area of environment, forest, climate change as he is doing now or in this entire field of media, in the entire field of media and entertainment very specifically, HRD Ministry which he had so ably led at a point in time, the entire mechanism which CII is a core area which is heavy industry so to say or even areas of public enterprises etc. And he has always been very forthcoming if I can say, completely committed and immensely proactively facilitating ease of doing business for the industry and the very sensitive issue of environment itself, if I can say, has been a challenging task for the industry but his command of the situation is so impressive to say the least and under his leadership, the Ministry of Environment, Forest and Climate Change has participated in very, very important initiatives like the UN Convention on Climate Change, chairing the UN Convention for Combating Desertification and representing the views of the nation to the global sustainability discourses across. And on the domestic front, he has made the functioning of the MOF CC more transparent by launching online platforms like the Parivesh and introducing online monitoring systems for ease of compliance. And I must mention today, it's so fortunate that the recent draft notification on EIA 2020 demonstrates how ease of doing business can be made consistent with sound environmental protection and the industry finds a lot of value in the proposed provisions under the draft EIA. We are having meetings regularly with his ministry. Sir, CI deeply values your constant interaction with industry and appreciates your dedicated mission towards ease of doing business for industry which will go a long way towards building sustainable and a self-reliant India. And your continuous support and guidance to the industry has always helped the industry to drive forward the industry agenda across the various sectors, be it services, manufacturing or of course sustainability. And we look forward once again to your innovative ideas in this summit, the fifteenth Sustainability Summit, for enabling industry to build a very strong and a smart action agenda for the next decade. I'm indeed very, very certain that under your able guidance and your continuous support, we will be able to transition towards a more sustainable and a self-reliant Atmanirvar Bharat as we go ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Banerjee. May I now invite Mr. Sanjeev Puri, Chairman Advisory Council of CII ITC Centre of Excellence for Sustainable Development and Chairman and Managing Director, ITC Limited, to address us please.
Thank you, Renika. Honorable Minister Sri Prakash Javadekarji, namaskar. Dr. Chandjit Banerjee, Seema. Honorable Minister, it's indeed a privilege for me to extend to you a very warm welcome to this Sustainability Summit. I'm extremely grateful that you found time despite your very busy schedule. You've made it special for all of us for being here today to share your insights and perspectives. I know that climate change is very close to your heart and we have seen multifaceted, purposeful initiatives under your leadership and CB just listed all of these and your approach has been whilst dealing effectively with issues of environment and climate change, also finding pragmatic and practical solutions that also contribute to ease of doing business. It is indeed a matter of pride that India today is seen as a leader in tackling the challenges of climate change. There are ambitious targets for carbon emission reductions and you as the Chair of the UN CCD have also led by example by taking stiffer targets on restoring degraded land in India. So that I'm sure is going to inspire global community for further action. Thank you very much, Honorable Minister, for being here with us today and we do look forward to your views and insights and guidance on this very important subject. As we all know, even before the pandemic, the world was on a trouse of a sustainability crisis. On one hand, we had severe environmental degradation, we had depleting natural resources, water shortages and extreme weather events, extreme experiences of droughts and hurricanes and cyclones that have caused huge amount of destruction and disruption to economic activity. So, on one hand, while the world was facing the severe impact of environmental degradation, on the other hand, we also had this very serious challenge of generating enough livelihood across the world and the serious issue of social inequity. In fact, the World Business Forum's 2020 Global Risk Reports classifies climate change and other environmental risks as amongst the top five long-term risks for the world and we are already seeing the impact of it. In fact, even before the pandemic, mankind was actually in a race against time to try and replenish the environment before the severity of the degradation chokes progress, chokes economic progress and creates huge amount of colossal losses for the world. The pandemic has shown us how vulnerable the world and the society is. It has accentuated the whole issue of social inequality, the whole issue of livelihood which is going to get a serious blow given the global shrinkage of economic activity that is expected on account of the pandemic. In fact, there are reports that the progress that the world has made in reducing extreme poverty, we would probably go back a long way because of the impact of this pandemic. It is in this context where we need to generate, we need to generate livelihoods, we need to rebuild in a fashion as CB said that is more sustainable and inclusive. So, it is in that context that I believe that the Honorable Prime Minister's clarion call for Atmanirvar Bharat, creating a stronger, resilient and even more competitive India is what is required today. And that is the way forward to deal with the challenges that we face and may I also add that this whole issue of sustainability is not divorced from this whole issue about being self-reliant. I believe it is core to self-reliance because by adopting sustainability and adopting sustainable practices that are synergistic to the company's operations and strategies, one can enhance competitiveness. And it can also open up new opportunities as I will dwell allude to a little later. And more importantly, I mean, it's very clear that economic progress cannot happen, cannot be enduring unless the progress is sustainable, the progress is in a fashion that is inclusive. And for corporates, corporates represent very large economic organs of society. They have a pivotal role in economic activity and I think it's been never more important for corporates to act with compassion, act in a fashion that embed sustainability in their core business strategy. And if I might say so, that it is also in their self-enlightened interest to do so because business cannot succeed in societies that are in distress or societies that are facing serious problems. And as I said earlier, by adopting sustainability as a core strategy, we can strengthen competitiveness globally. Even access to capital is going to be limited if enterprises do not adopt sustainable business models. We are all aware of the trend of ESG investing. Latest data indicates that in continents like Europe and then Canada, almost fifty percent of the investments or the funds have adopted ESG investing as a model. In places like New Zealand, Australia, it's above sixty percent. US and Japan are in the region of eighteen to twenty-five percent and this trend is only increasing. So, if enterprises desire capital for growth and without capital, enterprises cannot grow. I think we will have to adopt the ESG framework which really embeds sustainability in business strategy. The trend of compassionate capitalism, the trend on carbon disclosures and the demands on this are only increasing day by day. And the fourth point I would like to say is that even access to markets is going to get more and more limited for enterprises that do not adopt sustainable business practices. And I can say so from our own experience. There are customers who prefer, for example, to buy from us because we are carbon positive, we are water positive, solid waste recycling positive. There are customers who want to buy only forest certified wood, which is what we make in our, what we use for our paperboard manufacturing in our facility in Badra Chalam. So, there are these markets that are open only to enterprises that practice sustainable practices. And the whole idea is that sustainability strategies are integral to the business. And when we bring this at the core of our corporate strategy and create business models that synergistically pursue creation of economic, environmental and social capital, I think we unleash powerful forces of innovation and strengthen competitive advantage. And I'm saying this by the conviction of our own experience. We have been practicing this at ITC for more than two decades and we are today the only enterprise in the world to be water positive, carbon positive, solid waste recycling positive for eighteen, fifteen and thirteen years in a row respectively. And our value chain supports six million livelihoods. So, it is eminently, I'm giving this example just to say that it's eminently possible to do that. Given the context that we are in today with the serious challenges of environmental degradation and we saw during the period when the economic activity had ebbed in India and globally, how Mother Earth healed herself very speedily. We saw the pristine skies, we saw the clear waters, we saw the migratory birds return and the world has seen it, we have seen it, for the first time, this generation has seen what the environment should look like. And I'm sure that having experienced this, society is going to demand even more purpose of action from enterprises to demonstrate sustainable business practice. So, in the context of sustainable and inclusive growth, I think that there are few areas that I would just like to draw attention to. And from India's perspective, I think it's very important to look at the agriculture sector because that's the sector which employs nearly half of India's workforce. Enhanced farm incomes can actually boost consumption leading to investment, employment and start, kickstart a virtuous cycle. And this is a sector that is challenged with a multitude of problems right from productivity to depleting natural resources, water resources are depleting and it has ineffective market linkages. And the recent reforms that the government has announced are partly pathbreaking. The interventions that have been taken actually provide an unparalleled opportunity to transform Indian agriculture and kickstart a virtual cycle of consumption and investment. The focus on the reform in the marketing side, the reform and the reform on the essential commodity side, the creation of focus on FPOs, cluster value chains, all these are very important tools that can help us create a competitive and sustainable agri-value chain and can also provide impetus to greater corporate participation. And in our own experience, I can say that we have seen that when we have worked with farmers to empower them, we worked on two important areas of enhancing farmer incomes, doubling farm incomes, aligned to the government's vision of doubling farm incomes and more crop per drop. And we have done these pilots at scale with over two hundred thousand farmers and in a couple of years, we found very appreciable results, about thirty thousand farmers doubling incomes, the balance thirty to seventy percent improvement and we found that water consumption went down from twenty-five to forty-five percent and we are now engaged with the Niti Ayok to transfer our learnings to farmers in twenty-seven aspirational districts. So, I'm just sharing this example just to say that with purpose of action, it is eminently possible to achieve these kind of parameters. And water security is extremely important for agriculture which is the lifeline of the economy. Fifty-four percent of India is water stressed, ninety percent of the fresh water resources to agriculture. So, not only the demand side, I think it's also a purpose of action to create community water harvesting structures. It can play a very crucial role in creating a competitive and sustainable agri-value chain. And our own water stewardship activities have brought soil and moisture conservation to over a million acres of land. And sustainable agri-value chains also will have newer opportunities because there are markets that are demanding sourcing from sustainable sources and there are markets that are paying premium for sustainable sources. For example, you know, the shrimps from Ecuador command a premium in the US market because it is positioned as shrimps from sustainable sources. So, adoption of this sustainable practices across the agri-value chain can create competitiveness, can open new opportunities. Similarly, I believe on the wood value chain also there are huge opportunities. India is unfortunately a net importer of a huge amount of wood-based products. Even although we have very rich bamboo resources, we import agarbatti. The recent policy interventions by the government as a player in this industry, I can say, has spurred economic activity across the value chain. Three years back, we commenced plantation of bamboo varietals that are suitable for agarbatti making and just this industry, which is not a very large industry just to give a dimension, can create twenty-two million mandates of employment. Similarly, and similarly, I think there is this whole issue of waste management that is critical because that has got an important role to play in preserving the environment, in making sure that our environment does not get further degraded. And the fourth area that is very important as well is the area of energy security. I think as corporates, we need to make enhanced investments in renewable energy besides improving efficiency of production and all these measures are actually going to enhance competitiveness of the industry and actually create unlock value for the shareholders and for society. So, these are the three, four areas I thought that are important as we sit back and introspect and rewire thought and action as we reimagine the future and rebuild as we recover from the pandemic. I believe these three, four areas of agri, water resources, energy, waste management, I think if collectively corporates and governments can come together and deal with this purposefully, I think we will be able to make a meaningful contribution to Atmanirvar Bharat to create a more sustainable future and to tell our future generations that when we had this opportunity, we have rebuilt in a fashion and are handing back to you a world that is more inclusive and more secure. Once again, Honorable Minister, thank you very much for your gracious presence. We look forward to hearing your insights and your guidance on this very important subject. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Puri. And now, ladies and gentlemen, I have the proud privilege to invite a special guest for today, Sri Prakash Javadekar, Honorable Minister of Environment, Forest and Climate Change, Minister of Information and Broadcasting and Minister of Heavy Industries and Public Enterprises. May I request you, sir, to kindly deliver the keynote address.
Shubko, bahut bahut namaskar. Sanjeev Puriji, Chandjit Banerjee. Dono ne tone set kia hai. That we can achieve sustainability and achieve carbon neutrality, we can become carbon positive and on many other environmental yardsticks, we can bring that results. I was just reading something that now the word is new normal and the new normal means people with masks, people with so many precautions around with social distancing. And now the time required for attending a function is absolutely gone. Now you can just enter into this scenario and immediately you can talk and then you are finished. So, it saves time, it saves money, it saves and every program starts on time. That's another benefit of it. And more than ninety percent attendance, so that's a good scenario but that should not remain long. We want Corona to go as early as possible but I see we will be with the mask and social distancing for next one or two years because when the vaccine will come also to vaccinate all people, will also take time. And therefore, it's not a small period, it's a long period when we will have to follow this routine. I always read one more thing is that people say, oh, see lockdown has given wonderful planet, has cleaned the air. Now we can see the peaks of Himalaya from long distance and we can see the clean water in Ganges flowing. Don't be romantic. If you will have industrial activities, there will be pollution even to a permissible limit. There is permissible limit for pollution. Beyond that, we should not go and we also monitor it. But to that extent, there will be addition when you fly vehicles, there will be pollution. You can't wish away pollution like this and if you don't want progress at all, then you can say that, oh, what a green world and what a blue sky with green earth. We have to achieve green earth and blue sky despite the odds and that is possible. Like the biodiversity which Sanjeev Puri mentioned, in India, we have only two point five percent of the world's landscape. We have only four percent of fresh water resources and we have sixteen, twenty percent near the population of the world and twenty percent population of cattle. But still we have eight percent of world's biodiversity. That is because Indian ethos and culture where you treat nature as also your part of life. You also treat all animals flora and fauna as your part of life. And therefore, we have achieved this biodiversity success. After the Paris Agreement, where you were also there, after the Paris Agreement, we are walking the talk. Many other countries are not walking the talk. And therefore, we reproduce time and again that we have reduced our emission intensity by twenty-one percent even before the Paris Agreement timetable clock flex in because twenty-one percent emission reduction and we have target of thirty-five percent and we are very sure that within next ten years, we will achieve that. And this is thanks to various industries who have participated in the program and have also saved their own resources and the pollution in the process, emission in the process. Then we have increased our solar installed capacity everywhere and now our energy mix in the installed capacity is thirty-seven percent from renewable resources. Prime Minister yesterday has declared and upscaled the target from hundred gigawatt of solar power to two twenty gigawatt of solar power by twenty twenty-two and I think that's a very real target. We have already achieved thirty-five gigawatt in solar power and as much as in wind power and therefore eighty-seven gigawatt is what we have achieved. International Solar Alliance has also clicked in and sixty-eight countries have ratified the agreement. We have taken many actions. When I discussed this in the UN Assembly, that we have levied taxes of six dollars per tonne of coal production. They were curious to know how this could happen. I said we have thirty-six parties in parliament but this happened unanimously because that's our commitment and therefore we have levied six dollars per tonne of production. That is the reality of coal production. We have also, in a way, when we leveled the diesel and petrol prices on the same platform. we levy, we tax, we put carbon tax on the fuel. We are also mixing ten percent of ethanol in petrol and diesel. So that is also a pro-environmental action from the part of the government. We have migrated to BS six, skipping BS five stage. So from BS four to BS six is a long jump. And all the vehicles now available from first April are BS six compliant. And the fuel all over the country is BS six. This is saving fuel, this is saving pollution. And we have also built up roads all over so that the congestion spots are gone. And now we can take a next step to our production as we have seen in Delhi that express peripheral ways completed has saved sixty thousand undestined trucks from coming and passing through Delhi and polluting Delhi. Now they don't do that. Even on Dhalaqabad Road, when we had to take at least twenty minutes to pass that congestion, now there is absolutely no time required, you can straight away drive to airport. So these things have changed all over the country. Very big tunnels, very big bridges and everything that has come up has improved the road transport very very, with speed and more importantly with pollution free. We have twenty-four percent of forest cover, tree cover in the country. And fifteen thousand square kilometers tree cover has been added in last six years. So that's a big achievement. And therefore, we are saying that India is walking the talk. We have already LED bulbs, a small program, but that has impacted too much. With forty, four hundred million the bulbs, LED bulbs, we have achieved a very important target on this emission front also. And we have reduced the power consumption to that extent. We have also brought ujwala gas for eighty billion people. Therefore, saving the trees from cutting and using it as firewood that has gone. And electrical vehicle push is also there, we can see many three-wheelers and two-wheelers flying on electrical. They are the charge bearers of electrical mobility. Four-wheelers also will come, become popular once the prices come down. And I am very sure that within few years, few days, you will have prices coming down in electrical segment vehicle with battery strapping facility. And therefore, we have achieved all these things. National biofuel policy has also been declared, we are not just blending. We have also flown commercial aircraft from Dehradun to Delhi with biofuel. National Adaptation Fund, there are more than thirty projects worth nine hundred crore rupees are also under implementation. And India has also launched Coalition of Disaster Resilient Management Infrastructure. So that's also yet another leadership initiative of India in the World Committee. And we are the joint leaders, co-leading leadership group for industry transition. Because that is very important transition. We have, Prime Minister on fifteenth August have given four important announcements regarding environment and sustainable future. One, that we will have hundred cities with lesser pollution in the air pollution and they will breathe cleaner than what they are doing today. And within four years, we will show the results. And we yesterday only reviewed the world situation and we are here also walking the talk. National Clean Action Program, Clean Air Program is on course and we will definitely achieve our target in real time. So South-South Cooperation also, we have already placed one fifty US dollars, one fifty million US dollars for this kind of cooperation with developing countries and India is always ahead in helping other countries. As we have to achieve, we need to achieve more larger goals. And therefore, as I narrated the whole story of what we are achieving and what we are going ahead with is a complete clear direction, a complete visionary policy. When we, when all both of you have said about Atman Nirbar Bharat. Atman Nirbar Bharat is not cutting away from the world. It is actually engaging more proactively with the world. But we will do less imports and more exports. So that is what the Atman Nirbar Bharat means. And that means becoming innovative. Because innovation and research are the two important tools in the hands of any developing country to develop. And therefore, the whole thrust of innovation. We had already completed successfully first grand challenge in the IT sector. And we are already holding hackathons and that will also become craze in college students. We are also having three thousand schools with attack fingering labs. And more than that, we will definitely be able to take upon the challenges of innovation and research. And there, our problem is that right from NASA to any team in the world which innovates something, in the team there are Indian brains. But we are contributors towards innovation. We are not owners of innovation because we don't patent in our own names. We are employed somewhere with the team which comes out with innovation. And therefore, India will now own innovations. We will do innovations here, we will support such innovations. And that will take us to the next level. And as Prime Minister has said, Sakhsh Bharat, we have achieved to a great extent, Sakhsh Bharat also with one twenty million toilets, we have practically become open divination country, open divination free country. And therefore, we are achieving our target. So Sakhsh Bharat, Saksh Bharat, Ed Bharat, Srest Bharat, Atman Nirbar Bharat is where we are living. And that is the travel of India for, for sustainable future. Because we believe that sustainability only will save the mankind from the worst of nature's fury. We are, once again, let me tell you, we, India as India, we are not responsible for the emissions and the climate that is happening. It is the advanced countries which have benefited from carbon emissions. They are responsible. But we are, we want to be part of solution. And therefore, we are taking our responsibility in a responsible manner and carrying it out professionally. My appeal to the world is that when we talk of sustainable future for the earth, we must, we must also present our case study of how each country is going ahead. Because many countries need more action, many countries need more rigorous follow-up. And if they do it, then only we will achieve the sustainability target. Otherwise, our efforts and some other countries' efforts will go in vain if the major countries don't realize their commitments in time. That's from my side. Thank you and all the best for the, for this conference, for this Sustainable Development Debate. And congratulations. And I will definitely like to have the gist of the recommendations you make because we want participation of everybody and feedback from all sectors and stakeholders. Thank you and all the best.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Minister. Thank you very much. Sir, as you spoke, I must say one thing. Culturally, India has been, sustainability and respect for climate has been in our DNA for centuries. And as you spoke, we saw phenomenal reflection of that. Sir, I just wanted to, actually, there is a huge, huge group present here today with us who is listening, who listened to you, who took notes. I just wanted to recapture four salient features that came out in my points from yours. And these are, I'm not going into, I'm not trying to sum up what you said. But I wanted to say that in the speech of yours, we see phenomenal leadership. Leadership of the country completely committed to this important cause. Sir, I see a huge commitment and sincerity of the government led by you and of course by our honorable Prime Minister. So the third is, we see a lot of plans, but a lot of them are completely outcome oriented and action oriented plan. So really, really wanted to acknowledge that and note that. And finally, very importantly, I saw that, you know, it was a very, very practical approach. You, I mean, that's what we all need from both, when we, sir, in COVID, we talk about lives and livelihood. Here we are talking about development versus environment. And I think that's a phenomenal balance that we saw in the speech that you gave to us today and which gives us phenomenal encouragement to see that we should be able to partner with this leadership of the government to look at the various synergies that you mentioned amongst the projects and the programs of the government. The mission synergies that you really elaborated on gives us huge opportunity for business to plug in. And really wanted to give our best wishes to you because you have demonstrated international leadership and contribution of India to this field of sustainability like what we had done centuries ago. Today, you have again brought back and to show that the world, that India can do it and India has the best of concern. So we look forward to working with you, sir. We look forward to engaging with you, we look forward from the industry to work with the government in many, many areas that you have spoken about and would really like to thank you for your time, your guidance and for your motivation. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Namaskar, sir.
With that, ladies and gentlemen, we come to a close of this session. We will continue with the rest of the sessions as planned. Thank you very much.